Could we all please stand for the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening, sorry for the delay, we had a meeting prior to this that ran a little bit late. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Conway?
Here.
Mayor Elliott?
Here.
Mr. Gendron?
Here.
Ms. Deliri?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Ross Sikic?
Here.
Seven present.
Seven present. First order of business, the public hearing, inter-district school choice program. Begin by opening the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Those in favor? Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the hearing. Those wishing to speak in opposition, those in opposition, those in opposition. Seeing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. What is the wish of the body? Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Annually, the committee has to make a vote under the state school choice law to adapt a position regarding inter-district school choice. And so, the public hearing was set for this evening, and I am recommending that for the 2014-2015 school year, that the Lowell School Committee again reject participating in the inter-school district choice program. Rationale is because our space and impact on our students is the recommendation that I put forward.
Okay, there's an item under new business that this motion will be taking up and the vote will be taken. Okay? Next order of business is, under special order of business, is a spotlight on excellence. Lowell High School Winter Sports. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, again, is another time for celebration of our accomplishments that we make in our athletic program at Lowell High School. We have much to celebrate, and I'm going to pass the program over to Mr. DiProffio, who will introduce the team awards and the students who are recipients. Thank you, Mr. DiProffio.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the committee, Superintendent Frank, and members of the central administration. Thank you very much for your gracious invitation this evening. One of the recent developments at our athletic department is to open a Twitter account, and when a person sends out a tweet, a message on the social media, oftentimes they use something called a hashtag. And a hashtag is some type of phrase that gives an overall or an underlying theme or meaning to the message that may have been sent out. And the one that I've been using all along with the tweets from our school is "One School, Many Talents." And this evening, you'll see living examples of the tremendous talent, the great student athletes we have, and the outstanding coaches, who are really teachers outside of the classroom, and are student athletes, are true student athletes, in every sense of the word. So at this time, it's my pleasure to introduce the Mermack Valley Conference Indoor Track Coach of the Year, Coach Phil Meyer.
Good evening, Mr. Meyer, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Superintendent, members of the school committee, it's an honor to be before you. Just like to highlight very briefly our success this winter. We finished the season undefeated. Actually, this is our fourth year being undefeated, so our seniors have the distinction of never having lost a dual meet, which is, I think, very special. The team did very well. Also, in the postseason, last year was a career year for us, winning the All-State Championship, but, you know, we're in the process of getting to where we were. In the postseason, we did very well. Our relay team, our four-by-eight-hundred relay team, won the state title. That team was made up of Johnny Abraham, Randy Nong, Tyler Richards, who is here with us, and Andrew Whitney. I also would like to have those student athletes come over here and just very briefly introduce themselves. We just had a meet this afternoon, so we're unable to get everybody down here, but if you could just come here and give your first and last name. Introduce yourselves, first and last name.
My name is Steven Panos, and I'm in track.
That's all we need.
I'm Louis Gonzalez.
Jonathan Valenzbalo.
Brandon Gilman.
Chris Gendron.
Tyler Richards.
Larry Carney.
We also would like to thank you for your support. Over the years, it's been, you know, quite impressive to just be able to service the needs of a huge team. We had over a hundred student athletes in the program this winter. We had two individuals who were named to the Lowell Sun All-Star Team, Randy Nong and Johnny Abraham. And again, you know, thank you very much for your continued support. And I'll turn it over to Mr. DiProffio. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce Coach Tim Patterson, our girls indoor track coach. Coach Patterson was the Mermack Valley Conference Coach of the Year, the Lowell Sun Coach of the Year, and the Boston Globe All-Scholastic Coach of the Year. And I should also mention that in the fall, he's the Assistant Cross Country Coach and was recognized by the Mass State Track Coaches Association as the Assistant Coach of the Year. So Coach Patterson's had a great year.
Thank you, Mr. DiProffio. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start out by just thanking the members of the committee and the people in this room for their continued support of athletics. Very successful year for the girls program. We tied for the dual meet MVC championship, and we were MVC league meet champs. Members of the team that are here tonight, if you guys would just stand and give a wave. Lexi Richards, Hannah Loughlin, Marissa Richards, Melanie Fitzgerald, Olivia Geiser, Brianna Savoy, Danielle Crawford, Hong Huang, and Sam Carson. And a couple of highlights on a few of these individuals, we had...
Coach, we'd like to get them up here. We want your parents to see you on television. You want to come up?
Yeah, 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 come on.
We've all seen that look before.
This is it, girls, this is your 15 minutes.
You're not getting off that easy. You worked hard for this. Let's go, Maguire, come on up here. You know, the good news, coaches, I know a lot of these girls by names, so they don't have any choice but to come up.
And a couple of highlights for some of these individuals. Three of these individuals were named to the Lowell Sun All-Star Team. Those would be Leishla Gonzalez, Iliana Medina, and Alexa Maguire. And we had one individual named to the Lowell Sun All-Star Team. She was Lowell Sun Runner of the Year. She was also a Boston Globe and Boston Herald All-Scholastic. And in addition, she was the MIA Division One Champion in the one mile and the two mile. And also, she was the All-State Champion in the two mile, and that's Kaylee Richards. Thank you very much.
It's my pleasure to introduce next Coach Rick Battistini, the head coach of our boys swim program.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the council, our athletic director who works so hard, and we're coming off a great year with boys swimming. Actually, a great run of five years where the last four years, we were 26 and 4. This year, we didn't have much of a record, but two years ago, we had our first undefeated season ever for boys varsity swimming. We were 8-0, which Andover and Chelmsford weren't too happy with us. I have four seniors here today. Captain Dan LaRocque, who's going to attend UMass Lowell, want to come up? Come on over and get on TV. Raoul Torres, who's going to Washington State University, he was our top sprinter. Dara Eng is going to be on exchange in Germany, Hamburg, and Captain Trevor Ayotte, who's going to go on and swim collegiately at Keene State. Although we didn't have a great record this year, it was a rebuilding year, we will recognize for the sportsmanship award, and we hope to get a banner in our pool for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Coach. Great job.
We also had some students win some major individual awards, so I'd like to bring boys gymnastics coach Jesse Raschak up for our first introduction.
Good evening, everyone.
recognition. I'd first like to introduce you to Molly Millet.
I'd like to introduce a young man who I met four years ago as a freshman, who came out for tryouts, knew nothing about gymnastics. And with the four years of training him, he won at states this year the Massachusetts
Molly is the goalie on our ice hockey team this past winter.
Senior Gymnast of the Year.
She's a three-sport athlete, plays field hockey and softball.
And with an injury occurring during states, he was unable to complete the whole tournament,
Molly was named the Mermack Valley Conference Dual County League Sportsmanship Award winner.
so we don't know where his full potentials would have lied.
This award is selected by the coaches from all the other teams, so it's a very prestigious
But what the head judge offered him, who is the head coach of BC, offered him a spot
thing that I should also mention. Coach Batt was too modest. The swim sportsmanship award is voted on by all the other teams that compete against
as an individual to compete for BC. He will be going to LaSalle College this fall, and this is Christian Bueno.
us. And so, for your opponents to think that you have good sportsmanship plus compete hard is a very great honor.
Thank you.
So Molly was recognized, and she was able to receive the award at the Boston Bruins game on March 17th. So I know we had a couple of nice pictures online of Molly with Cam Neely in at the game. So Molly Millet, a terrific student athlete, congratulations, Molly. Our second individual award from ice hockey is Ryan McKennedy. Ryan is a two-sport athlete, he plays hockey and also a member of our varsity baseball team. Ryan was selected to the Mass State Hockey Coaches All-Academic Team. Each season, there are only five or six student athletes in the entire state who play varsity ice hockey and are selected to this team, and Ryan was one of those selections. He's obviously an outstanding student in the classroom, he's a terrific leader, and also involved in community service, and a real pride of our school and our city. He represents us all so well. Ryan McKennedy. Our third award winner from ice hockey was Brent Sullivan. Brent is a terrific student, one of the leading scorers in Lowell High School hockey history, and he was named to the Lowell Sun All-Star Team. And in terms of ice hockey in Massachusetts, this area, the Mermack Valley, is one of the richest areas for hockey talent. And so, for Brent to be recognized among all these tremendous hockey players in our area speaks not only to his skill, but also the respect he's earned in the hockey community. A terrific student, great member of our Lowell High School community, Brent Sullivan. Thank you very much. I'd like to have Coach Brian Myers. I'd like to introduce Coach Brian Myers, our girls basketball coach.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us tonight, and thank you for all your continued support with athletics and everything. It means a lot to these kids. I have a player that I want to recognize tonight that we're very privileged to have, a student athlete, as a sophomore, has already done great things for the city and kind of brought basketball back to life on the girls' side here. And she's broken several records as a sophomore, she's been recognized as one of the top players in the state, definitely one of the best players in the area as well. If you get a chance to come out and see her next year, you'd definitely appreciate it. This year, she not only was recognized as Lowell Sun All-Star, but also by the Boston Herald All-Scholastic Team, and is recognized as a player to watch in the future. And this is Alexi Schechter, right behind me. Again, thank you for everything.
Thank you, Coach.
Next is our boys basketball coach, Bobby Michaelzik.
Step up, get on TV. Thank you for having us here tonight. I have two individuals, one, Dwayne Thomas, senior captain. He was a very pivotal part in our success this year. We made it all the way to the second round of the state tournament after losing to the one seed. He was our leading scorer and rebounder, and, you know, just a very instrumental part of our team this year. Sean Bryant, sophomore captain. You don't find sophomore captains very often, but he displayed a tremendous amount of leadership, and he did a lot of little things, you know, rebounding, scoring, assists, everything. So very proud of both of these guys, both of which were Sun All-Stars and representatives in the Mermack Valley Conference. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach.
I'd like to introduce wrestling coach George Bossy. Unfortunately, Sean Keel, who was Sun All-Star in wrestling, is also our lacrosse goalie, and just with the change because of the weather, he's at practice, but I know Coach thinks so much of Sean that we did want to make sure we had his moment recognized here at the committee. He's a terrific young man and an excellent student athlete. Coach Bossy?
Mr. Mayor, school members of the school committee, a couple of former students, thanks for recognizing our athletes. Sean is probably dodging some, he's a goalie on the lacrosse team, so I imagine he's got a little shell shock, so he's probably recuperating. Anyway, Sean's a three-year starter, also an outstanding student, and that's unusual for a kid to start for us for three or four years. Took third in the state, took fifth in the All-States, and kind of a kid that never misses practice and demonstrates his leadership by example. These are the kind of kids we all adore, and these are the kids that make us look good. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Superintendent, thank you very much, we appreciate your time. We had a terrific winter, and we're having a terrific spring. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. DiProffio. On behalf of the city, and I'm sure members of the school committee will have comments as well, but we want to thank you as well. One coach said it, I think, best. You do great things for the city, and you represent us well, not only here, but also outside the city, and that goes a long way. So I can tell you, I know a lot of these kids personally, I know how hard you work. I'm feeling a little bit old now, knowing I've coached you since you were six years old, but it's nice to, you know, it's nice to see where you have come from and where you're going, many and all of you. So on behalf of the city, we're truly proud of you. Your parents are proud of you. This is just one step, we all know, to the future, and you're going to go places a lot further. So on behalf of the city, members of the school committee, congratulations again. We look forward to following you in the future, too. Right? Members? We're all set? Mr. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just echo your comment. You know, obviously, athletics is such an important part of education, and these students have shown that with their prowess as student athletes. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And thank you, coaches, as well. See you, ladies. We'll see you on the pitch. Thank you, coaches. We'll just give a moment. Okay, next item is on the agenda of the minutes. Motion to approve the minutes for the regularly scheduled school committee meeting of Wednesday, April 2nd. Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Deliri. All loves in favor, say aye. And the opposed? Motion carries, accepted and placed on file. Next item number six, permission to enter, April 6th. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. To United Team Quality Center Incorporated in the amount of $26,939. To amend the existing contract to continue to supply services to the Alternative Diploma Program that is serving 30 students at grades 10 to 12 to require a long-term alternative education setting, including integration of special education students with non-emotional IEPs. The funding to extend the contract to September 30th, 2014. Funding will be provided to the school department, by the school department, by the local budget and the Mass Grad Grant. To Watermark Environmental Incorporated for $200,000 to provide architectural engineering services to assist Lowell Public Schools Administration in the review and preparation of bid specifications for various school projects included within the City of Lowell Capital Plan. Funding provided by the City of Lowell Capital Plan.
Discussion on those two contracts? Madam Superintendent, I have a question. If there's no objection from members of the school committee, this Watermark Environmental Engineering Services, can you or Mr. Lang elaborate a little bit more, and is this a publicly bid process? Mr. Lang?
Yes, I'd be happy to. The school department, excuse me, the school department through the purchasing office at the city hall had issued a request for proposals approximately a month or so ago to bring on an architectural engineering firm to assist us in putting together the bid specifications for several projects that were funded through the last year's City Capital Plan. So we had issued a request for proposals, three different firms submitted proposals. We held interviews with the three firms, we ranked and reviewed the proposals, and in the end, found Watermark's proposal to be the most advantageous.
Okay.
So we're bringing that forward this evening as a recommendation.
And what are those projects that were approved last year? I obviously wasn't here, so...
Yep, they were actually, they fell into three or four primary categories, but they touched on a lot of different buildings. There were several buildings that had exterior door replacements, several buildings that had hot water tank replacements, there were two or three roofs that need to have an architect review the existing conditions and then actually prepare the bid specs for the bid. The Colley Stadium Track, the running surface that's going to be replaced, they're going to look and put together that bid package for us. There were a number of different, these are all the projects that were actually approved in last year's City Capital Plan.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Roll call. Motion to approve, moved to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Ross Sikic. Roll call.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Deliri?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikic?
Yes.
Seven ayes approved.
Seven ayes, motion carries. Next, under memorials. Item number seven. So first one, Joseph Roger Kane, husband of retired Lowell High School Department Head, Eileen Kane. Second, Michael C. Healy, husband of Butler School Social Worker, Kadeen Healy. Next one, Roger Philip Nangle, uncle of Adult Education Director, Elizabeth McKernan. Can we please rise for a moment of silence in darkened chambers? Next section of the agenda, under motions. Motion by Steve Gendron, Mr. Gendron and Mr. Deliri. Request the superintendent prepare a contingency plan to accommodate the increase in middle school population expected for the 2017-2018 school year and report to the facilities subcommittee. No second needed. Mr. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Mr. Deliri and I discussed this and thought that, you know, we've submitted these statements of interest to the state for the high school as well as for middle schools, with the high school as a priority. Hopefully, we can do them all, or hopefully we'll win the application from the state, and they will either do them all for us or come up with a solution that will address all of the issues. But if not, we thought it would be prudent to have a plan for how we're going to handle that situation in 2017, when that wall or bubble or whatever it is hits middle school. So whether that's through modulators or through finding additional space, best to be prepared for that situation if it should befall us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gendron, Mr. Deliri?
He said it well, thank you.
Okay, further discussion? All loves in favor, signify by say aye. And the opposed? Motion carries. Next motion by Ms. Scott and Mr. Gendron. Request to receive an updated work order report that includes the date reported, the priority level, and planned dates of repairs. No second necessary. Ms. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After a recent visit to the high school, it became apparent that we still have some longstanding work orders that are out there. At this time, I was really just looking for a plan to complete the open work orders and also just to see where we are with the length of time versus, we had this discussion last year, and just to make sure there's nothing that's still out there year after year that's hanging on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Mr. Gendron? And then, Mr. Conway?
I think Ms. Scott said it well. Thank you.
Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Ms. Scott said, I believe we did have that meeting last year, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Deputy Superintendent Lang. Didn't we, at this particular time, work with the city to tighten up the process or the procedure so that there would be a constant check? Because I think prior to this, and I think it's a great motion, to be quite frank with you, but prior to, I think, prior to last year, there was always a backlog of all these work orders, and I thought we tightened that up quite a bit. I mean, it was discouraging to hear that going down the high school that there's still a lot of stuff that hasn't been fixed, and it's been very, you know, it's been something that has lasted a long time. You would think it would have been handled by now. Mr. Lang?
The, two things on that, and I'm happy to provide this report for you. We did, when we had our joint facilities subcommittee last year, one of the things that we have direct control over is the actual filing of the work order, prioritizing it and sending it off to the city to have it put in a queue to have the work done. We don't have a lot of control on our end with regard to actually when the city comes out to perform the repair, or what they have for either our staff or contractors that would prepare the service. So I'm happy to prepare the report to show you that. One of the steps that we did take last year to just assist us in the review, the existing work order system that we had was kind of an in-house, homegrown system, so we did actually convert over as of July 1st to a new work order system. It's called Maintenance Direct, and so all of our schools are now actually filing their work orders in that system. It's a web-based system, the reporting functionality is actually better for tracking, things of that sort, so...
the procedure so that there would be a constant check? Because I think prior to this, and I think it's a great motion, to be quite frank with you, but prior to, I think, prior to last year, there was always a backlog of all these work orders. And I thought we tightened that up quite a bit. I mean, it was discouraging to hear that going down the high school that there's still a lot of stuff that hasn't been fixed. And it's been very, you know, it's been something that has lasted a long time. You would think it would have been handled by now. Mr. Leary?
The, two things on that, and I'm happy to provide this report for you. We did, when we had our joint facilities subcommittee last year, one of the things that we have direct control over is the actual filing of the work order, prioritizing it and sending it off to the city to have it put in a queue to have the work done. We don't have a lot of control on our end with regard to actually when the city comes out to perform the repair or what they have for either our staff or contractors that would prepare the service. So I'm happy to prepare the report to show you that. One of the steps that we did take last year to just assist us in the review, the existing work order system that we had was kind of an in-house, homegrown system. So we did actually convert over as of July 1st to a new work order system. It's called Maintenance Direct. And so all of our schools are now actually filing their work orders in that system. It's a web-based system, the reporting functionality is actually better for tracking things of that sort. So I'll be happy to produce those reports for you so you can see them. One of the things that we are going to have to look at is we asked each of the senior custodians of the buildings to go through any of the outstanding work orders that were in the old system and basically verify whether the work had been done or not, and if it hadn't been done, to re-enter a ticket, and that was part of their training in the new system, into the new system so that then it could be tracked from that point forward. So all of the tickets in the new system, when we look at the report, are actually going to have a work date entry of July 1st current. If something, say, had been entered last February, it's going to show in the new system as if it was July 1st.
After you working on this now, it sounds like it's a little bit more effective, the process. When you prepare that report, can you or would it be appropriate to put in possible situations that could make it better? Recommendations? Is that something that you would put in your report, various recommendations?
Yes, I think what we can, excuse me, one of the things that we've actually tried to do is now that we have this data in a system, it's much easier to manage, to see, the reporting functionality is 100 times better than it was in the old system. I've actually had some initial conversations with the city folks who do that city stat program because that was a motion that a few members had made to see if we could start looking at some of the work orders and gauge, you know, response times by trade so that the city can actually look at their staff and say, "Do I need more electricians? Do I need more carpenters?" or whatnot. So they're starting that process now, and they're going to take the data that we have in the existing, the new work order system and throw that into the city stat program so that they can actually look at some metrics and see how their staff is performing. So that is ongoing. I can give you like a status report as to how things are happening. I think what will be important is once we hit June and we have a full year in the new system and you can kind of see annually what the requests are, how many per school, how many by trade, and then what the response time is, it'll help us going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Further discussion? All those in favor, the motion signified by say aye. And the opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Martin, could you please take the chair?
The chair recognizes Mayor Elliott. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. So we're looking at a motion by Mayor Rodney Elliott, Superintendent Report on the Process to Select Counsel for Contract Negotiations, seconded by Mr. Gendron, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I filed this motion to get an understanding on the process used to hire counsel or an attorney that's used to negotiate contracts for the city as well as other services for the school department. It's my understanding, or I read, that the last time that any contract was signed for these services was back during when the city manager was John Cox. Is that correct? So that was quite a few years ago, and I'm wondering why, well, let me just ask, what is the process? Or what was the process that was used the last time this contract was signed?
When the position became open, I believe it was 2005, there was an application which was, went publicly. There were several people who went for that particular position. There were interviews that were held at that particular time, and a contract was offered at that particular time to Attorney James Hall.
So there wasn't a solicitation, there wasn't a formal solicitation, it was just a letter that went out, or how?
No, the school committee in my time here has had basically two councils for collective bargaining. The first council, Attorney Wojcik, passed in 2004, 2005, sometime around then. And at that point in time, the school committee needed to seek additional or new collective bargaining council. So they did issue a request for proposals, request for services, that was publicly advertised. There were a number of respondents, off the top of my head, I want to say probably a dozen or so. The school committee at that time scheduled interviews and actually looked at the different qualifications of folks, invited people in for interviews and made a selection of Attorney Hall to represent them at that point in time. The prior council had actually worked on an arrangement where he received partial services through a salary and then partial services through a contract. So salary covered the general negotiations and collective bargaining process. And when the former council would represent the school committee in either civil service hearings or arbitration hearings, unfair labor practice hearings, he would actually bill by the hour. The school committee at the time decided to wrap it all into just a one's part-time salaried position and not pay part-salary and part-benefits. So when Attorney Hall was hired, he was actually made a part-time employee of the school department. So there is no contract, he's an at-will employee of the school department. So that's probably why you haven't seen a contract, he's technically an employee. And this is since about 2004, 2005.
I don't really know, I don't know, Mr. Hall, I met him once when we were in executive session. It sounds like he's doing a good job. It's a concern to me when, you know, when we go out for services and on a long-term basis, I mean, we're looking almost, this is nine years since this was solicited or there was a process. So how did that continue for that many years? Was there a timeframe? It's usually a three-year maximum, or if it's a five-year contractor, requires confirmation, I believe, under 30B unless...
Right. Under 30B, legal services would actually be exempt. So you're not actually even required to go through a formal RFP process. Legal services, medical services provided by a doctor would fall into the exempt status. Mr. Hall is actually, Attorney Hall is an employee as opposed to someone who has a contract. So he really just serves at the will of the school committee. He doesn't have a given term, three years or five years. And I think that's probably why there hasn't been a solicitation, the school committees have been satisfied with the services, and he's just remained in his at-will capacity since 2004 or '05 when he assumed the role.
So how did that process take place? I mean, he was a contractor. Look, I guess I just think that sometimes it's good to take a look at this service or any other service, quite frankly, and that's why there is usually a limitation on the number of years that any contract is offered because you want to get the best price, you want to get the best service, and, you know, when you're using taxpayers' dollars. So I always think it's a good idea to take a fresh look or go out for, you know, for solicitation because that's how we do get the best bang for the buck when it comes to, you know, tax laws. And that's why there were laws in place for services or construction. I just asked earlier about, you know, permission to enter in a contract because I do think it's important, and I do feel that we get, you know, the best service when there is competition involved. So what point was this converted to a full-time or a part-time position? And what is the salary that he's getting?
Yeah. Well, that was a conscious decision of the school committee at that given time. The school committee decided, instead of having the arrangement of having a contract for some services and a salary for others, that it was to their advantage to just have a contracted person, I'm sorry, a salaried person, part-time that served at will. There was a cost analysis done at that given time as to what Attorney Wojcik had earned in total based on his hourly and his service component for a number of years, and that factored into the decision on the range of what Attorney Hall would be hired at. Attorney Hall was hired back in 2004 or '05 at an annual salary of $50,000 a year, and that salary hasn't changed since he came on board. That salary was actually a cost savings to what the committee was paying in combination of salary and contracted services to Attorney Wojcik at the time. And Attorney Hall hasn't asked for an increase since that time when he initially came on, and he's just continued to serve in that position. But it actually was a cost savings to the committee, and that same salary hasn't changed in about nine or 10 years.
What was the prior, was the cost analysis done? I mean, what was the expenditure before and then after? And how do we determine how many hours have been?
I'll certainly provide that to you in a written report. I can, off the top of my head, don't hold me to the actual dollar, but the total fees over the committee did look at that point in time, about the last three to five years of service with Attorney Wojcik. And I want to say that the fees ran anywhere from $60,000 to $80,000 a year in total fees that they were paying between salary and services. And the decision was made at that point in time to just offer a flat salary of the $50,000. And that was the agreed-upon amount.
What was being done before then? There was, who was doing other work for the school department prior to that, prior to this change?
Attorney Wojcik had been the school committee's counsel for collective bargaining. It's a very finite area. He only handled contract negotiations and contract administration, representation in certain hearings. And he had been in that position, I honestly don't know how long. He was only the second person I've ever known that was in that job. So he was in that for years until his passing. And then when he passed, we had to, the school committee had to replace him. So that's when they went through the process to seek new counsel.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'll look forward to that report. My other concern is, as I mentioned, Mr. Hall, he seems to be doing another, you know, a good job. I've only had one interaction with him. But my other concern is the, you know, the appearance issue. You know, I understand his wife is a school teacher, you know, and in government, we have to, you know, we hold ourselves to the highest level to prevent any appearance of impropriety. You know, I know there was a disclosure, but from the, you know, city's perspective, we have to make sure that we're into these negotiations that are, you know, our interests are very well represented. So that's why I also think sometimes going through a bid process is the best way to do that. So, you know, it's a concern moving forward as we're just about entering, you know, these negotiations that we have, someone that, you know, that there aren't any conflicts and, you know, that we're represented in the best way that we possibly can. And by all accounts, that's probably, you know, could be the case. I've just been in a contract negotiations for a few days, but I think that's something that we also need to be, you know, cognizant of. So I guess I, you know, if we can get a full report on the process and moving forward, is this the best, you know, is this the most cost-effective way to have someone doing, you know, jobs for the school department essentially as well for union negotiation? So those are my comments, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Mr. Leary?
First, I do appreciate the mayor's concern. I think that those are legitimate questions when you're looking at, you know, going into negotiations. I think the key points that we have, we have a lot of different flexibility with this. One, it's an at-will employee. So if we really don't like how this is pursuing as we get a representation, we can easily end that and bring out another attorney, which frankly, in different lines of litigation, that happens frequently. I'm confident that that won't be the case because I believe he will have positive representation, but that turns out not to be the case. Again, we have an at-will attorney, we can remove that attorney at, well, at will. The other factor, I like the cost analysis, I think that's something we should be doing often anyway. And I also would, if you could in the report, throw in really kind of looking at that special ed attorneys we look at. We did that a few years ago as we brought that in-house. I think that's good to look at, to see how the market is reflected outside. I think it's always good to look at those numbers. I don't think there'll be changes, but you really don't know until you start looking at what the market has. Looking at the number of $55,000, last time, you know, this, we're talking 2005 numbers, 2004 numbers, and that was a savings as we brought him on, that's good as well. But what is that market driving right now? I think that's important for us to digest as we get into budgets. Again, I would look at all of our legal applications, and then the one that comes to mind is special ed. I know that the city attorneys handle our workers' compensation and liability and have done a fine job as well as the superintendent negotiations as well as assistant superintendent negotiations. But I think it's, I think the questions are valid. I think that the mayor, once he gets into a lot of the negotiations, that he'll develop that same comfort level that I've developed over time. And if we don't have that comfort level going forward, we are very easily to change legal teams in midstream, which frankly, doing a lot of workers' comp, I know I do it unfortunately frequently because you want someone who's going to be a fighter for you, representing your interest, and doing it at a fair price. Thank you.
Ms. Scott?
Thank you, Ms. Martin. I believe this is a very good motion, it's important for us to take a look at the process. But what seems to be missing to me as a part-time employee of this committee is a process for a review to happen automatically. I mean, I don't know if that's something we could discuss in personnel subcommittee, maybe refer this motion. It just seems like that should just be an automatic process that this discussion happens. So I'm in favor of this motion. Thank you.
I have no objection to amending that motion.
No other comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Next motion of the night is by Mr. Gendron. Request the mayor declare Friday, May 2nd, 2014 as Citywide Service Day in Lowell Public Schools. Seconded by Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is my favorite motion of the night. You know, this is a community service effort. What I found out through this discussion is that there are a great number of community service efforts going on at all of our schools already. So I think that this effort is a way to assimilate them all and recognize them all and maybe get some exposure throughout the city for the work that our students and our teachers are currently doing to serve our communities, and as well as spread the ethic of community service to other students in our schools who perhaps do not have that right now. So what we're doing here, Mr. Mayor, is on May 2nd, Friday, May 2nd, we're going to have a kickoff of the community service efforts in the City of Lowell. And on that day, every school throughout the district, elementary and middle schools, will be doing some type of community service. Specifically, we have four community gardens, which we work with Mill City Grows on, and we're going to have a kickoff event at 10 o'clock, I think at the Shaughnessy School, Madam Superintendent, I'm not sure if that's the one, but we can get the schedule of events later. But that's going to be an event where we have a classroom of kids who are planting there in the Mill City Grows garden bed that they constructed for us. And we're going to invite all the city, the school committee members to attend and, you know, wear your gardening gloves and get your fingernails dirty and help us to kick off this community service event at that day. In addition, we have a lot of the elementary schools who are decorating Demulis bags. Demulis donated a whole bunch of paper bags. The kids are decorating them with environmentally focused messages. Then we're going to return them to Demulis, and Demulis is going to use them on May 2nd to deliver groceries. So we'll be sending that message to anybody who shops at Market Basket. And then at the Sullivan School, later in the day, they're going to be having a community service parade. So they're having a parade right after school around the neighborhood. So it should be an exciting day to bring some recognition to the community service efforts that our students do on a regular basis and hopefully some exposure. We have a representative from the Lowell Sun here, I hope that we'll be able to get a photographer down there to take some pictures and give our kids some credit. Mr. Mayor, I'm hoping that maybe we can get a citation to declare the day that maybe we can read on that morning. And the follow-up to this will be integrating this into the curriculum, which is the more important thing, I believe, is finding ways to integrate this community service, like this environmentally focused community service, into the curriculum. And that's something that I think we're going to look at doing next year, especially in the science and social studies classes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Gendron. Further discussion? There's no objection from the members, I'd just like to make a few comments. I think this is a great motion, Mr. Gendron. It'll be a privilege for me to bring this to the city council. If there's no objection, I think it'd be a great idea to have you come and speak, and we present you with a citation, not only on May 2nd, but also at the city council meeting prior to that day, and heighten the awareness of the day, and I think it's a great idea. So. All those in favor of the motions, signify by say aye. And the opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, that's it for the motions. Next... Next item, next on the agenda, subcommittees. Curriculum approval of the minutes of the meeting of Tuesday, April 1st, 2014. Madam Chair, Martin. We're just approving the minutes? There's no report?
Yes, I'm sorry. I was distracted. I have to apologize. Yes, so the, at the, at our last meeting, I had given the minutes. Just as a refresher, we had talked about the mathematics vertical team update, the establishing the first STEM school homework policy and the community service day based on Mr. Gendron's motion, prior motion. So it had been presented to this committee, and I would submit the written minutes now for your approval.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Motion to approve by Ms. Rossikowicz, second by Ms. Scott, and placed on file. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next subcommittee report, athletics. Report and approval of the minutes of the meeting of Monday, April 7th, by the chairman, Mr. Gendron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we did meet regarding the athletic subcommittee. Mr. Leary and Mr. Conway were on board that committee. Is that right? Mr. Conway? Okay. And the athletic subcommittee. And we had Brian Martin and the athletic director, Jim DiProffio, in attendance as well. Mr. DiProffio gave us a overview of the winter athletics, and we just had a really good overview of it here a little earlier, so we don't need to talk about that any further. One issue that we did bring up was the issue of the athletic coaches' stipends, which Mr. Conway had raised to the full committee and referred to the athletic subcommittee. We, Mr. Lang delivered a proposal for slightly changing the schedule with which we pay our coaches, and it called for an initial payment four weeks into the season, another one eight weeks into the season, and then the final payment when all the uniforms and materials were returned. Everybody seemed happy with that. It passed the subcommittee unanimously. So I think we need to have a motion, Mr. Mayor, here on the full committee. I don't know if you want to do that now or at the end of the...
I think it's wise to do it now, and then we'll proceed with the next, another motion correct, so.
So the motion was to accept the proposal by Mr. Lang to change, modify the athletic coaches' stipends.
Motion by Mr. Gendron, second by Mr. Leary, to accept the recommendations to modify the process to paying stipends. Discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mia Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Rossikowicz?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Seven yeas, motion carries. Mr. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the next item on the agenda was the idea of the physical education waiver for students who are in athletics at the school. This carried some spirited discussion at the meeting. There's a lot of, a lot under the hood when you talk about having to waive phys ed classes. The headmaster actually recommended against doing it because of the logistical difficulties in making it happen. He did, however, say that he has the right, he believes he has the right as headmaster to waive phys ed under certain circumstances, mainly if it's, you know, if there's an academic need behind the request. And he believes he has the wherewithal to do that and has done it in the past, but there was some question about whether that violated state requirements. So what we did was we referred the motion back to the superintendent to investigate to see if, if indeed the headmaster has to do that, has the right to do that on individual basis, and if so, is there some type of criteria he has to follow. Madam Superintendent, I don't know, do you have a response to that?
Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Gendron. Upon the conclusion of the meeting, and we will send it out in a formal report in response to your request, the state law mandates physical education. It is one of the mandates that's pretty clear through 12th grade. They also say that there can be exemptions with things such as other things, like Lowell High School does, for dance class as well as for the ROTC class because of the physical nature of those particular classes. However, in the particular legislation, there is, there is not anything other than saying a replacement for athletics, that particular point, which also makes me think about some of the waivers that have been taking place. So that's kind of a different ground, to be honest, because it was said that when children need other classes in lieu of a physical education, they'll let them do that, and that's been something that's occurring at Lowell High. But it's very clear, and those of us in the room that have been in education all our lives know that the one thing that was always mandated was gym, even as an elementary and middle school teacher. So that is that particular case, but I will have that as part of our formal response that we can do for the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. And finally, Mr. Mayor, the last item on the agenda was the Eric Thomas motivational speaker that's coming to the auditorium tomorrow evening. We had a couple folks there, Annalise Saab from the Saab Foundation and Amzi Morales from the AMSI Foundation, and they are sponsoring this event for this nationally-known motivational speaker, Eric Thomas, to come to Lowell, and they are trying to get young people and adults alike to come and hear him. There's tickets for sale for this event, but they have offered tickets to all of the high schools in the region, including Lowell High School. So the reason for them being at the meeting was to try to see if we could use the athletic teams to raise attendance specifically from Lowell High School and Lowell Public Schools because they're also inviting eighth graders. Mr. Martin and Mr. DiProffio said that they would take it upon themselves to try to get more attendance from Lowell schools. We have students coming, busloads of students coming from all over the region to this event tomorrow night. And I know, heard from my son, that Mr. DiProffio is taking that seriously and working hard to get more students there. Also, all of the school committee is invited. I'm planning to go tomorrow night, and I'm looking forward to it. If you Google Eric Thomas online, it looks like it could be a very interesting evening.
Thank you, Mr. Gendron. Just on that last motion, last item regarding the physical education requirement, entertaining a motion by Mr. Gendron, second by Mr. Conway to request the superintendent investigate and report back to the athletic subcommittee regarding the state requirement for high school students to participate in physical education, right?
Yes.
Was there any further discussion on that, Mr. Conway?
Yeah, just very quickly on that, I think we have to be careful in what Madam Superintendent has said. You have to be very careful of any more waivers because I think the law is pretty clear that it says that every student in every grade were mandated to take physical education unless there is a note, written note by a physician, saying that that student is unable to do it. So I think we have to be a little careful. I think perhaps in the past, it might have been past practice that we would make some waivers, and I know that, I know that I'd been down there for many years, and I know that there were some waivers that were given, and I think in all good conscience too. So I think that taking a look and reviewing that law to make sure that we don't violate that law is, I think, is extremely important. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Further discussion? Mr. Leary?
Just quick, I didn't, moving pretty quickly, but part of the issue too is that there's not, there's a desperate need of physical education curriculum development, and I know there's motions on it that I've filed. We need to really provide alternatives for folks. I think that ties into what the whole discussion's really about. And I didn't want to get into a long discussion on it tonight, but it's a curriculum issue. It's something that, I know, and I looked through the motions earlier, that there's no motion that's been addressed. I know I filed it about the adventure education, but it's more than that. So I'm going to refile it again because it's something that needs to be updated. I do appreciate the discussion. I think it was pretty spirited. I think there's a lot of different issues besides just the curriculum part that affected based on scheduling that we can get into further. The issue, I guess, about making waivers, I think if we get into this process, maybe it is a positive thing if we have that latitude for the headmaster to have some ability to do that as we get into the dialogue. What does the state allow? How does the school committee policy interact with it? If the headmaster, who is ultimately running that op, this high school, maybe he should have that ability to make on an individual basis. But again, it's the curriculum that needs to be updated, and it needs to be put back on the motions in terms of something that's still outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? The motion is to have the superintendent report back on the state requirement. Mr. Gendron?
Madam Superintendent.
Madam Superintendent, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to add to the Eric Thomas presentation, just to let you know that I confirmed with Mr. Martin just before I came to this meeting, actually.
Madam Superintendent, can we just take a roll call on that motion?
So before we roll call, Mr. Mayor, I...
I just want to stay on one issue, and we'll resolve that issue, and Madam Superintendent will go right back to it.
And toward that, on that motion, as part of the report, it might be good if we looked at, in addition, in lieu of a waiver, if there's some way that a student can have an alternative activity on a day where there's a significant athletic event, like you don't want to make kids go swimming on the day that they have a swim meet, or swimming on the day they have a wrestling meet or a track meet. It's just not going to be productive. So maybe there's some way we can achieve that goal without formally granting a waiver. So it'd be good if we could look at that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Roll call.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mia Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Ms. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Rossikowicz?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Seven yeas. Madam Superintendent, on the Eric Thomas motivational speaker event.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just that I did confirm that 500 tickets were purchased at Lowell High School, and those tickets are being used. There is a large operation going to the auditorium. Also, I wanted to just let members of the committee or other city officials who are attending that Annalise Saab, I spoke with her two days ago, and she is saving spaces for you all in the front rows, just so you know that, in case it wasn't told. I just thought I'd spread it here for any other counselors whomever can sit right up front.
Is there any chance we could get called up on stage? Because I don't want to be in front if that's going to happen with this guy.
Could I just ask one question? It's April 17th. What is the time? I don't think we announced the time that the event's taking place.
Seven PM.
Seven PM. Great. It's taken a motion to accept the minutes, approval of the minutes by Mr. Gendron, second by Ms. Martin. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed? Minutes are accepted. Next report under subcommittees, technology, report and approval of the minutes of the meeting of Monday, April 7th, by Mr. Gendron. Mr. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So following the athletic subcommittee, we had a technology subcommittee. Myself and Mr. Leary were present from the school committee. And we also had Mr. Silver, the IT director in the city, and his entire department show up to support him. And it was, I thought, a fantastic presentation that they gave us. He went through all of the work that he's been doing over the past months to try and build a solid compute infrastructure and wireless infrastructure across the district. It is a multifaceted problem. It is a real challenge, what he's doing. And all along, while he's trying to do these improvements to the city's infrastructure, his department has to act as the help desk for anything related to technology across the school system. If the printer jams and somebody can't fix it, they call his department. So they have incredibly big challenge, and it's only going to get greater as the technology needs of the school system go on. So I won't go into a lot of the detail. The presentation is in here. If the committee would like to go through it, it was really just a report of progress. We did commit to try to meet on a monthly basis or at least maybe a six-week, every six-week basis so we can get status and updates from him, because I think it's an important enough mission that they have for us to keep a close monitor on it. I did want to talk a little bit about one of the motions that was brought up about coordination of the social media, websites and social media across the school, across the school system. They, the system that we have now, we asked the superintendent, really, to develop a procedure by which each school gets their website updated on a regular basis, submits things to the MIS office for, you know, communication across the Lowell school system website as well as Facebook and maybe even Twitter, to communicate with folks who are in the school district. Ms. Susan Lynn from Project Learn was there. She's actually taken up the mantle of running the Facebook communications for Lowell Public Schools. If you noticed, every day, there's some kind of a communication that goes out. So what we'd like to see is a system where the schools continually update their websites, and each school has a stipended webmaster, so that should be doable. And then that, those updates get sent to Susan Lynn, who then, you know, uses selected ones to communicate out to the public at large. It might be, you know, spelling bee at the Washington School was successful, and, you know, whatever, whatever positive messages we can get out there. We talked a lot about how important it is to relay all the positive things that are happening in our school district. We don't hear about that enough, and we have within our control the ability to communicate that over social media. So we asked the superintendent to develop a process by which we can more efficiently communicate that information, and she did agree to do that. The one thing I did want to note from the review, from the report, if you look through there, he's got reports that show how much we've improved on the web communications, because the Lowell Public Schools website is actually pretty good now. But there's charts in there to show that we've had, you know, about a five-fold increase in hits on our websites. So, and also a large amount of hits from mobile devices, so people are using their phones and their iPads to monitor what's going on in the public school. So we're making progress in that regard. We're definitely becoming a more tech-savvy school system, I believe, but we still have a ways to go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Gendron. Mr. Leary?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to you to the superintendent, just one thing we didn't really touch upon was the portal through K through 8. Do we get an expected timeframe while that will begin to be implemented?
Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the, right before the beginning of this new committee, I started, before the formal negotiations, we started talking about the technology with the teachers' union and having to negotiate or think about how we're going to move forward with certain pieces of technology. We have, it is not mandated at this particular point because that's something that we've been talking about, to agree to that kind of consistency, although it is something we want to improve upon. So we, when we come into negotiations, we will continue that. Technology, part of the negotiation. It's been problematic.
Throw you again to the superintendent.
Mr. Leary?
Are we trying it on a volunteer basis, much like the high schools? When is that going to be, I guess, rolled out to begin through K through 8?
In the middle school, we use the grade book and we do use the parent portal as requested by parents. It is an option for parents, but it is not a mandate.
Okay, so if I'm in fourth grade, then I can go into the portal and get my child's grades right now? And is, and the option for the teachers to update stuff, is that available?
There are options to be able to upgrade websites and the grade, but not, the grade book is used for report cards across the system. I'll ask Ms. Abrams if there's any clarification, if I'm not right to speed, but they use for grades for report cards. But there is an option for parents to be in the portal. I just don't know how consistently it's populated, and that's the issue, Mr. Leary, as you know.
Why don't I just be specific? So my child in first grade at the Bailey School, I can go in and find out his grades, and if the teacher opted to enter something, I have that ability right now to do that?
Ms. Abrams?
Do you?
I'm going to be perfectly honest. I'm not sure of the answer for that, but I will look into it. I believe that, given the end line and given that portal, it's possible, but until I know for sure, I would like to check that out and get back to you with that.
I appreciate that. Just a second follow-up. It was a great meeting. I thought it was very informative. It's impressive what the number of staff have done, especially with the testing, the park testing, that basically shut down their department because they had to implement it. I think they did a yeoman's job, and the folks that we brought on in basically a year, year and a half, two years almost, of time have done a great job, and I know recommendations are going to come forward. But I think it's important, as Mr. Gendron had outlined about the websites, we have folks who have that website ability are getting a stipend. It's the expectations that we reach down to the principals from the administration that they begin to attempt to accomplish that. That needs to be done because that's our product, and as Susan Lynn outlined, that's how our schools are represented. Another issue came up to me in the neighborhood, someone was asking about Twitter and Facebook. I know we have the ability, we need to set timetables before the end of the year to get Twitter access so our principals can reach folks who want to use that technology. I know it's capable, but now we need to raise the expectation to achieve that. And if there's obstacles in the way to doing that, which I'm not aware of any other than raising the expectations, then we need to know about it so we can implement that through budgets or if there's a policy that the school committee needs to do. I'm cognizant of the fact that a lot of mandating anything needs to go through negotiations, especially if it's a teacher-orientated, but I know that principals will, I know a lot of them want to use the Twitter feed right now. And a lot of them are communicating through telephone, where a lot of other folks would rather follow their schools through Twitter or through Facebook. We need to make that available now. And if there are an obstacle, again, we need to provide that information to the school committee, so the school committee can act upon it. It's about raising expectations. Thank you.
Okay, motion by Ms. Deliri, seconded by, I've heard discussion on this? I'm sorry, Mr. Gendron?
So, I just, I'm sorry. There was a motion, are you going to deck up the motion that was in the-
I was.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Motion by Ms. Deliri, seconded by Mr. Gendron, requests the superintendent Franco prepare a plan for presentation to the technology subcommittee and an expanded social media/website presence at each of the schools and the districts. The plan should include minimum requirements for each school and the district site, and ensure consistent professional presence in the district's communication with stakeholders. Further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mia Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Ms. Deliri?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikowicz?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Seven yeas. Motion carries. Still under subcommittees? Oh, I'm sorry. We just moved the motion. Motion to accept the minutes as a report of progress by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Gendron. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, minutes are accepted. Still under subcommittees, joint student support services and personnel, report of the meeting of Tuesday, April 15th, by Ms. Ross Sikowicz, Chair of the Students Support Services, and Ms. Martin, Chair of Personnel.
I would make a motion to actually defer this report to our next meeting.
Okay, motion to defer by Ms. Ross Sikowicz, seconded by Ms. Martin. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And the opposed, motion, that report is deferred to the next meeting. Still under subcommittees, next is the facilities, report of the meeting of Wednesday, April 16th, by Mr. Deliri, Chair. Ms. Deliri?
Thank you, Mayor. We just met before the meeting. The meeting was called regarding to our pre-bid conference that was set on April 10th for potential respondents to the advertised RFP for administrative office space. Mr. Lang provided some of the feedback that we did receive and made certain recommendations regarding that feedback about spacing. And I'll let Mr. Lang kind of elaborate a little bit, but the first recommendation was pertaining to our lease timeframe. And I think the initial RFP had three-year lease timeframe, but Mr. Lang and, I guess, the administration, I know the administration made the recommendation that we extend the process between three years and five years. So, I might get this motion, I'm just trying to remember from the top of my head how we worded it, but it was basically to recommend to the full school committee to propose terms of a minimum of three years and a maximum of five years. And then that motion, basically, would have to go to the city council, because the city council would have to approve a five-year lease. So, I guess that's, make that as a form of a motion. Before I make, in addition to explain the motion, this would give us more latitude in terms of getting better opportunities for spacing.
Okay, motion by Ms. Deliri, to recommend the term be extended from three years to-
From three years to five years. So, it would give us flexibility. It could go anywhere from between three and five.
Modify the current RFP term at three years to include timeframe from three years to five years. Correct? Seconded by Mr. Gendron. Mr. Gendron?
Yeah, I think, I think what we discussed is actually asking for two options, a three-year option and a five-year option, so that we were asking the applicants to, you know, submit both, so we could compare the two.
You're correct. I apologize. We just had the meeting tonight. But that's exactly, we were looking for different, some flexibility. I think the way you've worded it was actually better than I, from my memory. It was for options, option for three years to five years. So, it was, his wording is more correct than mine.
Okay, why don't we just withdraw the, no objection to withdrawing the first motion? Mr. Gendron on the second? Motion withdrawn. Want to restate the motion, Mr.-
So, we're looking for two options, one, three years, and then the second option, five years.
Okay. Motion to request that the RFP be amended to include two options for submission, one on a three-year lease, one on a five. Right? Seconded by Mr. Gendron. Discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mia Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Ms. Deliri?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikowicz?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Further discussion?
And there was a recommendation, I don't know if we need it in the form of a motion, but I guess really discuss it on the floor, and maybe we do. The motion would be is to have really a flexibility of having a staggered movement from folks from the central office, where you wouldn't have everybody leaving just on, you know, August 1st, that some would be able to stagger throughout the fall as they moved. And that would afford flexibility if you had an opportunity with a potential landlord who didn't have something prepared, right by August 1st, they may have it prepared by October. And the thought process, not only to be more advantageous to getting a better opportunity for the school department lease, but it's also an opportunity, basically, for us to take a look at having maybe also more than one spot. So, if you're looking at the, the parent information center might be located close by in another location. So, something to have more of the flexibility as a staggered timeframe for movement. So, I don't know if we need that as a form of a motion, or just more of a form of a point of information.
Well, I'm going to presume that some language must exist in the RFP, correct, Mr. Lang?
Yes, on this, on the second point, when we talked about this in the subcommittee, the RFP right now specifies we're looking for all locations in one building. So, the second point we talked about is to potentially attract more respondents. Some of the feedback we received is different people who may be interested in responding might own multiple spaces within the same area, and be able to locate, say, the Family Resource Center in an adjoining building to the main building, but not have it be in the same building. And to open up as many possibilities as we can for people responding to this, we think that would be advantageous, and that would be the recommendation. So, the actual vote would be to allow for a potential respondent to separate the storefront building location for the Family Resource Center from the administrative office space, which could be located in a different building. And then further to, if the same landlord happened to have 20,000 square feet in one building and 20,000 square feet in another building near each other, that could accommodate our existing department configuration, that we would entertain those options. So, it was really providing flexibility on those two fronts.
Exactly. You know, I apologize. It's just, we did this today, and I completely didn't, it's right in front of me. I was looking at the bottom one. You're correct. That would be in the form of a motion, as Mr. Lang articulated, and the options really were, so if you did have, it would give us better position to get something that's more affordable for the school department.
So, motion, will this, will this addendum come before this, before the school committee again, Mr. Lang?
The reason we-
I think I'd like to see it. I mean, exactly what the impact is, but I'll read the recommendation.
I think part of it is, and I apologize, it's my fault for not presenting it in a more clear fashion. The key is that if you had an individual who had a location that was close by a landlord, it had, couldn't fit the whole spacing requirements, but had something that was nearby, because part of this pre-bid folks, several, I guess landlords that came up with it, they may have a building nearby, that would be able to fit our parent information center, that you wouldn't preclude them from the bid, that would be part of the process. So, you could have an option of actually having two locations if it actually, the price fit what we're trying to achieve. And my fault, I didn't really, we did this at the beginning of the meeting, and my presentation was less than clear, Mayor, so. But I think what this position does force, it affords us the flexibility moving forward and getting a better price for the city.
Mr. Gendron?
Yeah, I was just going to say that. I think it affords us the ability to get a better price, because we're allowing people to submit options that have split locations. As long as they're close to each other and meet a certain set of criteria that we can put out there, there's no reason why we couldn't have, you know, the parent information center and the ground floor building, you know, a couple of blocks away from an office building that houses the rest of the administration. I think it makes a lot of sense, opens up our options, I don't see a downside.
Ms. Scott?
Just one question, through Ms. Mayor, to Mr. Lang. So, the separate location, would there be a preference, like a points preference, like there is throughout the rest of the RFP, like we have for the distance to parking, whether or not there's, you know? Would that also have a preference if it was all together in one place on the point scale?
Yeah, well, we're actually, we'd be revising that particular section that looked at what was highly advantageous down to not advantageous. Basically, to try to give the committee the most amount of options that you possibly can. The most highly advantageous of the top will still be one location that can house everything in the same building. But then a tier down from that, which would still be considered advantageous, would be, you know, housing all the admin space in one building, but Family Resource Center close by in another one. And we'd have to specify what close by is. You know, the third ranked down might be someone that splits the admin space into two buildings and the family center into one of them, but there'll be a whole scoring criteria that'll go along with evaluations.
Okay, so possibly like the split is done for parking, how it's broken out by distance?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion on this? Ms. Deli, have you been in contact with planning and development on these? I understand, is there a time, is there a time issue with moving this forward?
Yeah, the reason we actually had the facilities subcommittee tonight so we could talk about this is to give me some feedback. The way the bid schedule is right now, there's about two and a half weeks left for the vendors to submit their bids. When it was advertised, we had a pre-bid meeting last Thursday, and these were some of the questions that the different proposers or respondents proposed to us. So, we felt it was important to get some feedback, so that we could issue an addendum and still have people have two, two and a half weeks to be able to work this into their response. And the bids are set to close on Friday, May 2nd, and the next school committee meeting isn't until Wednesday, May 7th. So, we felt there was the need to get feedback tonight on that. This really actually is just broadening the number of potential responses that can be considered. It doesn't restrict in any way the existing parameters. It really is just going to allow the committee to have more choices and more options to evaluate once the proposals close.
Okay, so there are two recommendations in this communication, correct?
There were three. I don't know that you necessarily need to vote on the third. The third recommendation really was just, some of the, you know, the initial language said that we needed to take occupancy of the full space by August 1st. Some of, but there's a very tight timeline between the bid closing, a contract award, and if there is a build-out. Some of the vendors also didn't know if they might be, they might not be able to have everything ready by August 1st, so they asked, do you absolutely have to have all the space available August 1st, or could you do a staggered move? So, internally, what we're actually doing is taking a look at phasing to figure out exactly how many folks and how much square footage would be required to be available on August 1st, and then how much might we be able to assume, you know, every couple of weeks or a month or two later, to give the vendors more opportunity to have the space built out, have us actually occupy the space, and then begin the lease for that additional space as we occupy it.
Okay.
So, something would, that would actually save us money as we're doing a staggered move in, and also would, again, provide for possibly more proposals to look at, because more respondents might be able to accommodate the request.
Okay, thank you. Motion to, motion out of the school department, administration work to identify a minimum amount of finished space, office space that will be required for occupancy on August 1st, as well as a plan for staggered occupancy through the fall to increase the potential number of sites to consider. Lease payments would become due upon occupancy. Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Ross Sikowicz. Further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mia Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Ms. Deliri?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikowicz?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Seven yeas. Motion carries. Motion to accept the report, as a report of progress, by Mrs. Gendron, seconded by Mr. Conway. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, motion carries. Reports at the superintendent? Madam Superintendent, STEM school action steps and progress report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We began talking about the Rogers School reopening as a STEM school at the curriculum meeting of April 1st, which was reported verbally our last meeting, and then approved this evening. And so, there was also additionally a motion requesting a superintendent, by Ms. Martin, requesting superintendent report on the current efforts to establish the first STEM-focused school for the beginning of the FY 1415 school year. And so, in that, this particular adaptation of the school, or we have started a subgroup or a advisory board that really is looking at how to reopen this school, and we're moving forward. We started looking at building out the school at the Rogers School, providing options for students assigned to the Rogers to remain. You have to remember, because of our pressure of allowing this school really having new students even during this year, that the student enrollment, which I'm going to talk about in our next report, we had students coming in. They did not get a school choice. Our other schools were at a point where we couldn't have the choice, so these families have not had a choice. So, they may, in fact, want to move or want to stay, so there would be space. There will be up to 80, we hope to keep that kindergarten number down, lower than 25 next year. We have, there'll be that many spaces for kindergarten. There is already only 50 kindergarten students, there's only two classes. There is a full first grade contingency that will move up to second, but we'll see if there's school choice for that particular point. And so, then, we will then look at recruiting students who want to come to the citywide school, and in fact, have a wait list if possible. We have done that with preschool, so there is a process for that in our organization. Hiring a principal with a background for the first STEM school. I had advised the committee, and I've told the news that I was approached by Principal Jason McCreeven, who has a science background, who needed a personal change in schedule, and it seemed to be a choice that was good on behalf of the Rogers, and knowing that we need to fill the Bailey School with just as talented leadership as it has at this particular point. So, what we really need to do is start the advertisement piece for the STEM school. We need to have parent meetings for interested parties to really talk about what it is. We then need to talk about who wants to teach there. You know, are you interested in hands-on science? Is it part of the work? And then have an interview process. Some of the teachers that are at the Rogers School are permanent or are not, so depending on that piece, the teaching staff can be maintained or amended, depending on the focus. Additionally, we will have PD, of course, in the summer as, to get up to speed, and we'll add the instructional and materials that are needed. Part of the plan that will come before the committee is a one-time cost to set up this classroom and other mandated classrooms. In the next report, you will see, and this is all in the guise of getting everybody prepared for budget, because we're going to have some tough choices, as we always do. We already know that there are going to be, there's a need for seven autism classes. We have 30 children waiting to be placed as their birthdays appear, so we always are ahead of that. So, in essence, for that one-time money, it will be the materials and the setup for places like the Rogers, and actually, the additional classrooms that we're going to need to get in play. So, that will all be part of the budget process, and in June, of course, we'll have the status report to the school committee. The principal, when up to speed, already wants to, has already looked at the space, and as a science coordinator in his past, before he came to Lowell, he knows about mobile units and whatnot, so there's always some thought and some conversation about that. So, this is actually a report of progress. Lots of work to be done. Our advisory board has people from IT, Andrew Chen, who is, we're mutual colleagues and friends with Dr. Chen. He is on our board, as well as people from the university, Dr. Greenwood, and other names, but especially our teaching staff that have worked on content literacy, our But especially our teaching staff that have worked on content literacy, our coordinator of science, Martha Cone, and lots of other fun people that Ms. Abrams got to join the crew. But I just wanted to provide this to you all as a report of progress. And it's a first possibility as we move towards our public schools becoming an option for parents with different themes.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I certainly want to thank the superintendent and assistant superintendent and all the staff who are involved in pulling this together. I really do recognize that this is incredibly timely, and I appreciate it very much. I would say so as we're looking at the timeline that we'd be able to, hopefully when we get to our next monthly curriculum and instruction subcommittee meeting, be able to have an opportunity to look at some of the promotional materials. And then perhaps also get, I know we had talked about adding some industry representation to that advisory committee. Hopefully maybe by that point, we may have some actual individuals who've agreed to serve in that capacity. But I, you know, again, I'm very appreciative. I think that we've certainly laid a great groundwork. There is going to be a lot to be done as we move forward, but I do think that we're looking forward to having some really inspired leadership. And I think that that will certainly bode very well for this endeavor. So I thank you and the entire team that pulled this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Further discussion? Motion to accept the report.
Mayor, hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Larry.
It's through you. So it's great we're putting all parents involved. What are you going to do about the other school where the principal's leaving? Are you going to have parents involved in the selection of a new staff? Because as you're aware, the vice principal's also retiring out of the Bailey School.
That was your cue, Mr. Larry. I'm sorry, Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, yes, I'm sorry. The, a few things. Number one, parents, of course, actively involved in the participation. We have, I spoke, Mr. McRaven and I have an understanding that he will in fact be helping to lead that group to make that particular process. We know we have experienced people that have been applicants, and we think that there's a rich pool at this particular point. Additionally, looking forwards to the future, that there can be a mentoring from Mr. McRaven to new principals. He serves as a mentor to a principal who is new to our system this particular year, and making sure that parents have the involvement. We did speak about it in the letter that went home to families about using a technology tool to make sure people know about the process as we go, and making it the most interactive process we possibly can, Mr. Larry.
Also, Mr. Larry. Ms. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When could we expect to see some budgetary numbers for the cost for the school to come forward?
Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. The budget for this particular building would be like a startup for any budget. The startup costs for materials and whatnot would be with a different lens, although it may be more expensive in some ways. However, there would be a classroom teacher and all the kindergarten teachers, just like any startup. There would be a paraprofessional kindergarten because that's the mandate. There would be a grade level teacher at grade two this time for new teachers and outfitting the school. But it also matters on how you think of staffing. And so in the initial conversations that we're thinking about to staff the school, which we would have to do for class size, because that was part of this committee's really challenge. This has been a really challenging three years because we've had the early enrollment go up so substantially. So in essence, instead of having a content literacy teacher, the planning that will come forward to you all is that it will be a science teacher, that there's an extra science block, that of course there will be coaching and there'll be a different way of how you use the instructional time towards the science technology theme. So how will we use project, I'm actually forgetting the name of the product, but we have it, we use it to science, Ms. Abrams, Project Discovery, Discovery?
Ms. Abrams?
Project Lead the Way.
Thank you. Okay, and so in essence, also, we have begun a very nice partnership with companies around Lowell. MACOM, Lowell Works, other engineering firms that have really stepped up. So it's including the real-time kind of curriculum. It's really about curriculum adaptation. That's a major part of the work that happens. So in essence, it matters for the curriculum. There may in fact be some other costs that will always come before the committee, but it's always about staffing. How do you staff? How do you decide to staff? Who becomes a specialist there? What's the background? And that's part of the work that we're going to do. So the budget will be coming forth, but it's really like outfitting any school to reduce class size, but it will have the focus. That's why it was so critical to get a leader who we knew could start a school and begin and put in that curriculum work, because it's that kind of leadership that is integral to the success of a school like this.
My concern, I've brought it up in the last meeting. I am supportive of this model. My concern is that this project-based learning should be happening in all of our schools. I'm worried about the inequity of not pushing this forward across the district. I also feel, you know, if you feel it prudent to move away from, you know, content literacy instruction to science instruction, I'm not sure why that discussion isn't happening across the district, not just in one school. So I look forward to a discussion in the curriculum subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Further discussion? All those in favor, motion to accept this as a report of progress by Ms. Scott, second by Ms. Ross Sikowitz. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries. Next item. Reports of the superintendent, our changing population. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, again, in preparation for the budget cycle. And that really began with the report that Ms. Ross Sikowitz and Ms. Martin will have, because we talked about our alternative schools a bit. And so we're starting to just frame the context and the work in all these very important departments that will in fact come to some decisions when it comes to budget season. So I did write a report for the committee. This particular report compares numbers from all of our groups that really need some extra work and some alignment, and we're talking about that as a district. So this is our changing population. I'm going to ask you to do this. Just a second. Thanks. Scroll it, okay. Okay, so again, our core issues that have been the core issues throughout my superintendency, communication oversight and shared leadership, response to instructions, so making sure we're improving instruction for all learners, and in fact narrowing the achievement gap for high-need student populations. So when I look at the information, and when we've been looking and working together over time, you can see I also left a copy of the PowerPoint if you wanted it to be up closer. The first table, so when we talk about our class size, there's been increased enrollment over time. Since I put, we put some seven years, seven years of data. And so if you look at our student population, we have 500 more students than we have seven years ago. But if you look at the population that has risen, the numbers in the early childhood have been substantially part of that. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong page. If you look at the overall numbers, I've presented this three times, so I'm going to go back a bit. You look at our population, first language not English has decreased. Our person, our ELL has just about the same, but we have children who have much more need, newcomers, who have lack of formal schooling. Our low income is up by eight, over eight percent. Our disabilities is about the same, but the need of our children who have disabilities has substantially changed, and we'll talk more about that. Our free lunch has increased again, as well as reduces a little lower. But our total population is that we have about 500 more students since '07, '08, a little bit more than that. So as we continue to look at, where's the common? Why can't it just be a regular mouse? The second one, I'm sorry. So, I should have practiced before, I apologize. So here's our early childhood numbers. This is what our first, the first recommendation, and thus the Rogers School, which we would have had to open up in some capacity, as we have been using that school as the only place where we have the extra space. The numbers over time have changed. So our kindergarten numbers from 1011 to 1314 have gone up by a couple of hundred kids. And then all the way up at the lane. So we've had a rise substantially over the last three years. Again, in grade one, we maintain the students, but kindergarten has been the largest gain. And so over time, we've had that rise, especially at that particular level. At the same time, the charter school, Sabbath Charter School or the Lowell Collegiate Charter School has enrolled 268 students. So in addition to the extra kindergarten students, we would have had close to 1,400 kindergarten students in the city. So that says a lot about the rise in our particular numbers. At this particular point, that thus brings us to a standard curriculum change. So opening the first citywide STEM mathematics school that we just talked about, because we need the space. And so that would reduce the elementary school class size. It would give us the option for the STEM academy, and we would also be able to start planning for that middle school. The motion this evening is extremely timely because we have to have a plan. It is very strange, and even the other day, I kind of had a kind of little meltdown because I called, Ms. Abrams and I were planning, we said, we have, I haven't since the time I've been in Lowell, planned a school without a feeder. That's very different. So this is the work that we're doing as a committee. We have got to have a plan because there is no feeder for this school. Our schools are all full. So that's part of our building plan, and so this is a very timely motion because the Rogers School in, by that year, will not have a feeder school to go to. So that's what we're working on long-term. So that's the plan for the increased enrollment over time. This really is a collaboration, a huge collaboration by the Special Education Department, the English Language Learner Department, as well as early childhood. And all of us came together to kind of, to talk about what are the needs of all the populations that are coming. Here's what's happened already this year. Just so you know, we service 1,351 special education students. It's 15.5% of the district. We also service 4,340 children who need English language development. It equals 31% of the population. In 2012-13 school year, we have 78 students in the pre-K CSA classrooms. And I know that Ms. Director McChrystal, as well as her staff, already know from our existing students who will be ready by their third birthday, and that's going to increase by another, I know there's already 32 kids in the wings. And that's before we get any new children from outside. Additionally, we provided pre-K for 143 students, special education students in general services. So that's 36% of the total population. So if we look at the children by their disabilities, and we see how that has risen over time, which is interesting because it's important for everybody to know that. Since 2009, we have 63 more students on the autism spectrum. We have 63 more students with communication disabilities. Our emotional disabilities have diminished, and I am contributing in that to the fact that we have four I schools. We have separate schools for emotional disabilities in the district, and that has helped us in to absorb them. Multiple disabilities and so on. So we've had, our percentage is a little higher, but the need of the students is most definitely part of what we're talking about this evening. Just for point of reference, just so the committee knows, how many of our students are in separate classes across the district? So we have had a discrepancy, a change. Forty more students are in autism classrooms over the last four years. And there are 25 more emotional and on, multiple disabilities, six more, one more. So total 72 more children who need special services. And then when we looked at the outer district percentage, you will see that the cost for an outer district student specifically is between $55,000 and $75,000 without transportation. Although the numbers have maintained around the same amount, it is still very, very costly, and we know that. But we want Lowell to be the best placement for our students. And so we do that by maintaining a good majority of our children with special needs. Then we looked at the data, and the data for the state as well as the data for Lowell remains pretty flat. This is growth data. You want to have about 50 growth percentiles for good growth, and so it remains flat. So we say, what do we need to do in both ELA and mathematics? So that's overall data about the children with disabilities and what we need to do as a district. We will have some recommendations and some ideas. I'll ask the committee as we go, would you like me for questions, or do you want to wait till the end? As you wish.
Why don't we proceed till the presentation and if there are questions?
Thank you. Okay, so talking about the next group, the English Language Learners, language proficiency changes. This is substantial, and I just wanted to bring you to that attention. The difference in children, and if you look from 2009, just to 2000, in Level 1, this is the result of children from refugee background. We have increased a substantial amount. There were 225 children who are newcomers. In 2009, there were 336 at this particular point. The challenging part with the newcomer population is that we do not know well enough in advance. They're refugee students. Federally, we know they're coming. They will tell the International Institute that we're getting 90 families. We don't know how many children, we don't know their ages. So that's the challenge that we face. If you look at the LEAP data, this is what Access told us, that we need to look at data for children. So we do have 17% of our children at the lowest level, but the onslaught of their skills, not having formal schooling from behind there, has been a challenge. And again, just some academic data regarding the children who are English language learners. So as you look for improvement and planning improvement, there is really a need for us to do some program alignment, some, and teach, teacher collaboration, and some focused resources. Because we do not have an exorbitant amount of resources, we have great resources at the district level. We need to provide community professional learning, and we need more integration. So I decided that the best way to talk about this is if we talk about some case studies. So names have been changed to protect the children, and I just wanted to talk about a few case studies that would make, this make sense. Lowell has been a phenomenal district. When I came here in 1996, I could not believe the special education services that were here, from coming from the city of Chelsea, which was another urban district. This was by far an amazing organization as far as meeting students' needs. Least restrictive environment, free and appropriate public education is the way this district has been forever. And I compliment all of the city leaders who have been in these chambers doing that because it's phenomenal. However, when you are building your organization, as it happens, we do not have the alignment for children. And I'm going to show that within the next few slides. We're going to talk about May first. She's a refugee student. She came from Burma. She has little formal schooling, or it's been interrupted. She left Thailand with her dad and her brother. She, her mom's still there. And her current education is, she really doesn't know how to read. She's learning how to read. She's currently in a newcomer class, which this committee has supported, the newcomer program in the top of a population. There's more than 25 children in that particular school. So the problem is that we're, there's not enough room for integration in that particular school because we put that because of space and because of diversity, really, at the beginning. We put it in a two-strand school, the Pine School, this particular student, and for integration purposes, there's not enough space. So we really have learned that we need to move it to a four-strand school where there's enough space for May to stay, and children like her. When she comes out of the newcomer program, she might have to go to a new school because we can't absorb all the children into a two-strand K-8 school. And then she will be separated from the sibling, they will have to meet new children. So for a child who's new to the country, it's not the best situation. So that's one case study in the world of English language learning that has typical outcomes only because when you don't have formal schooling, the challenging part is that it takes a longer time to get out of a newcomer program. You just have to build more skills. So that's the part that's challenging. The next child is a child, Henry, with an emotional disability at the Lincoln School. He's recommended to be in an adjustment class that's in another zone because we don't- He's recommended to be in an adjustment class that's in another zone because we don't have the programs at all zones, because as we've been building the programs. In essence, he will be at the Merklin School. He then will transition to a fifth grade that will not be in his feeder pattern because we do have a model where we have children stay for a number of years in the adjustment class, and the grade level changes every year. That's been the model. And then he will go to the daily, but that's not where his peers are. So there's a loss of relationships and problems when this, when this happens. There are two other examples. I don't know if it's too lengthy. In the principals group, I presented it yesterday, but in the, in the next case, it's a little child who has a CSA background, Julia. And so Julia is at the Mc Avenue. She lives across the street. All the pre-K classes are located in Zone One. She had to go to the Maury School. She has to take a longer bus ride as a result, and in her pre-K class, there are no pre-K classes in her zone. So when she goes to school, she does not have the same class that she had in the past, and the family does not make connections. So again, the implications are that what we need to do is to move the programs to a place where there's continuance. So in essence, if your child starts off in an autism classroom at the Bailey School, they will then have a classroom that continues, and they go with their peers to the daily. And I have other examples here, which I know it's a lengthy presentation. But the whole theory behind this presentation is that even though we've developed a system that has met the needs of many, many children, we do have lots of places where we need to move classrooms, where we have continuance of services over time. I'm gonna run to, just to the programming model, so that's slide fourteen. Yeah, thank you. So here's the difference. The current model has a model that has been, has some disparity over time, that there's out of zone, the bus and transportation is longer, there's new peers, and they'll have to go to different middle schools. So the proposed model is to move those programs consistently to zone. It impacts transportation. It also gets the district ready, that we have standing programs on each side of the city, so we can eventually move towards a transportation model that is more effective. And so the proposed model is to move towards that, and then in essence, be able to impact the instruction and the collaboration pieces as well. So that's the same particular model, to move the classes. And I'm telling, I'm, we're, we're, we're working out on where it can go, so there's equity on both sides, but there's also disparity of service that people belong to a community. Next one. You can push it to the next one. The same process for the, the limited English proficient newcomers, that they will go to a Mc Avenue School, Wang School, and they would be there the whole time. So what we're looking for is a way to increase the collaboration for all jobalike teachers. We want teacher turnover. This proposal started from teachers. We have an adjustment teacher in one of our middle schools. It says standing alone is just not something, and that's historically been one adjustment class in each middle school. And we know we need to put that together so a child can be a member of a school for an extended period of time. Also, we wanna improve the children's outcomes. We want less transitions, and we want consistent community and school relationship building over time. And what we want to also incur the transportation savings that can happen as a result, and less time for kids on buses. Also, we can teach communities of learners how to work with particular populations, where they have a specialty with that particular group. And we can look at the goals and objectives for a whole cadre of teachers to work together. And our specialists can be more effective if they're not spread all over, all over the city. Just to note, to let everybody know how it relates to the report, I really took the beginning of the report apart, which was about special education, English language learners, and of course, our standard curriculum needs. We would have to talk about this more at length when we talk about the numbers that I included in the report, about homeless students and children who have never had preschool, because that's a longer conversation. But what I want the committee to know, it is the plan of this administration to move with our principles and planning towards moving these classes that have existed over time for different purposes to alignment. Because as we're moving Central Office, you know, to make room for, for a new population of young people again, we also want to provide services to all of our other children, whatever their need might be, that they can be members of a community for their K-8, whole K-8 process. And although this is wordy and lengthy, the way us educators do it, I just wanted to get this out there because there will be recommendations for movement. But as superintendent of schools, my promise was to do the best I can for the most young people, and I don't think they have the access that everybody needs.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be very brief. Madam Superintendent, I wanna thank you for the report. I know it's very lengthy, and you, obviously you and your team have put a lot of work into it. But I think what, what it shows, it shows the public that the fourteen thousand students that we have is a very complicated and a complex group to educate on a daily basis. And it's, you know, a lot of times what happens is many people will compare, why does it cost so much to educate our kids versus someone else? And I think that what you just did right here, you certainly showed that, again, there are many different, complex needs that, that so many of our students need. And, and we obviously have to educate them. And, and it becomes very costly. So again, I'm glad that you brought this out, and it certainly is, it was very descriptive. Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Mr. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I would concur with Mr. Conway. Clearly, this shows the diversity within the school district of all kinds, and it is a challenge, but it also can be a strength for our community as well. I'm curious, though, obvious, the recommendations that you're making here seem to make sense from the perspective of addressing these particular issues, but there's gotta be a downside to it. What's the trade-off that we make by making these changes and creating those, you know, consistent strands?
Well, as we are realigning the programs, we're, we're meeting with principals, who has the most strength, who has the space. This is, this is complicated business. What do we move in? What do we move out? What have they worked with in the past? After vacation, we presented this yesterday to principals. The day after the twenty-ninth, we have a meeting, and we're going to look at by zone what the plan is. There's so many people who've worked on this arduously, and I will thank them all at the end of this. But there will be a side. You will hear from people who have to move. You will hear from people who have been in certain places. You'll hear from leaders who have had a certain population for a long period of time. We're looking for the best match to come together. And so I don't think we've heard the other side of this, but we are working as the leaders of the district to make the best plan for the children. And you'll, that's why I really recommend that we refer this to the, the student support or the curriculum. It's really about curriculum, too. So whatever, I, at the will of the committee, to really talk about the fine parts of this because there are implications and conversations that will be, I'd be happy to have with you all.
So that's a real concern, right? Because we want to be careful about bouncing kids around too much. I mean, for the very same reasons, we don't wanna, you know, pull May out of her school and send her across the city. We don't wanna spill, we wanna, wanna displace somebody over there and have to send him across the city. You know, so I think we need to, well, I, the motivation clearly is positive. I hope that we can do it in such a way that we minimize that kind of bouncing around and, you know, displacement of students who are, are used to schools, perhaps have siblings in that school. So that's my concern.
Yes, but that's, that's the goal. When you see the planning board, which has a whole continuum of where the services will be, it has been very carefully thought out, but we still are sharing to make the best decisions. And we would gladly share that with the committee when we're closer to, to know exactly the landing place for all.
Thank you.
Ms. Scott?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I have more of a logistics question. I guess we probably discuss it at this meeting that's going to be planned. But for the newcomer population, how many students are there at each grade level at a typical school like, like the Pine for the middle school program?
The, the intention was to always be at about twenty-two. But our newcomers who have come within the last few months have put that over. That particular place, each, each teacher has a paraprofessional. And so classes are twenty-five, but some are over, twenty-five or twenty-six, depending in the combo classes. That's why we have to have more, more slots. We have to open up more spaces, and we have to break down the grade levels.
How long are they in the program before they, you know, typically before they go back to the regular?
For children who comes with formal schooling and they speak another language fluently, you could really virtually go through a newcomer program within a year, really. If they have academic language, native language, it's really important. If a child has no formal schooling or really doesn't have a cohesive or academic native language, it takes more than a year, probably two years. And if there's no number sense, no literacy, and even a native language, it could even be longer. So that's why this particular group of children, we've had like a refugee program, because there's a specific academic skill set that's connected to that. So it can take longer.
But the school needs to absorb like five or six students? I mean, would that be a fair estimate per year?
Exactly.
So if you have two classrooms with twenty-five students in each one, then there's...
And that's the issue and the reason why we need to expand the reopening of the Rogers, because we have to kinda try to protect the class size for when integration happens. So it's okay for the first two years, but after that, you know, we're doing partial integration, and that's part of it. So that's...
And would reducing the class size at the start of the year for that school be part of the discussion? Because you can't absorb them in if there's no space.
That's what we always have attempted to do at schools like the Riley and the Mc Avenue that have...
I just know it hasn't happened all the time.
Yes, I know, because we don't have...
Thank you.
Yes.
Further discussion? Motion to accept the report as a report of progress placed on file by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Ross Sikowitz. All those in favor signify by say and aye. And the opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is quarterly report on motions. Questions? Mr. Gendron?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I noticed the motion, one of the motions regarding the community service curriculum was indicated that it was completed. And I think that that is really more of a long-term motion, that we move that, you know, that community service element into the curriculum. So I don't feel like we've actually, we've done the first step, you know, we've created, you know, gathered the different types of community service that's currently going on. We've, you know, started the kickoff day on May 2nd, but I don't think we've gotten to the point where we can say, you know, we, community service is part of our curriculum. So I'd like to keep that active if possible.
Further discussion? I don't think we need a motion on that. For a discussion on quarterly report on motions, Mr. Leary?
Yeah, number ten. I think that's clear, like the portal, we, we need a response regarding that. We also need expected timeframe, so I think that's an ongoing motion as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leary. So noted. For the discussion, and the stated motion to accept the report as a report of progress and placed on file by Ms. Scott, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor signify by say and aye. And the opposed, motion carries. Next item, number twenty, Mary J. Patrickalupo, you make a difference volunteer recognition ceremony. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just inviting all of you to recognition evening for our volunteers. Last year, we recognized probably about a hundred volunteers that we have in Lowell Public Schools. This is in honor of Ms. Mary Patrickalupo, who began the parent liaisons many years ago and was instrumental in starting the Citywide Parent Council. And so we have, we're collecting the names of all of our volunteers across the district. We're getting eight, seven, nine, five from all buildings. So it comes to about a hundred to a hundred and fifty people. But we decided to recognize all of them. There used to be one from each building. So that's on that particular evening. I wanted to make you aware of that event.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Motion to accept the report as a report of progress placed on file by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor signify by say and aye. And the opposed, motion carries. Next report from the superintendent, number twenty-one, education pioneers opportunity. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, we have been approached to participate in a program where we can cost share a, a real high-level administrator to come into our district. But I'm going to let Mr. Lang take this one because I've talked way too much this evening, and I think he knows more about it. So I'll ask Mr. Lang to report on this one.
Mr. Lang?
Yeah, thank you. Very briefly, this is a, it's a real opportunity for the district. We've been invited to apply to host a fellow for a year, which would be a kind of a postgraduate person with really fine skill set around a particular area of interest for the district. One of the areas that we've identified that will really have some significant need is around data and data systems and the use of data to inform our daily decisions. So the, actually Assistant Superintendent Abrams' office is working on putting this application together to the Ed Pioneer Group to, to see if they would have a suitable candidate for us, and working with a grant coordinator. We're trying to work to write a grant which would fund, it's about sixty thousand dollars for a year, which would fund this person to do work in the district. We're hoping to be able to find a grant to be able to provide for that, if not under the timeline. This would be a recommendation coming forward for the budget, even as a placeholder, to allocate funding to pay for this if a grant fell through. It's really, it's an incredible opportunity for the district. It'll be something we talk about further when we get into May. But I wanted to get you some literature on it and give you the heads up that this is something we've been invited to apply for, and we're going through the process.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Motion to accept, present discussion on this item, Ms. Ross Sikowitz. Oh, motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Ms. Ross Sikowitz, seconded by Ms. Scott. All those in favor signify by say and aye. And the opposed, motion carries. Next section of the agenda, new business, a vote of inter-district school Madam Superintendent, Mr. Lang, this was an item from the public hearing.
My recommended, my recommendation is to not to vote for the inter-school choice.
Okay, pursuant to the communication from the superintendent, recommendation is to reject participating in the inter-district school choice program. Motion by Ms. Martin to accept the recommendation, seconded by Mr. Gendron. Roll call.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikowitz?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Seven yeas, motion carries. Next item under new business, permission to post academic department chair, mathematics, Lowell High School. Moved to approve by Mr. Gendron, seconded by Ms. Scott. Roll call.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikowitz?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Seven yeas, motion carries. Next item under new business, again, permission to post specialist for English language learner research and testing, curriculum, instruction, and assessment, pre-K through twelve. Motion to approve by Ms. Ross Sikowitz, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikowitz?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Seven yeas, motion carries. Item number twenty-five, under new business, permission to post computer network manager at Lowell High School. Moved to approve by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Gendron. Discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikowitz?
Yes.
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Seven yeas, motion carries. Moving on to the next section of the agenda, convention conferences request. There are three requests, two, three conference convention requests. Motion to take all three together by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor, that motion signify by say and aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, motion carries. Motion to approve by Mr. Gendron, seconded by Ms. Martin. Further discussion on this? Roll call.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sigewitz?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Next item, next section of the agenda, civil service. Item number twenty-nine, Lowell School Clerks Union hereby request to donate ten sick days to Donna Pelton of the Cardinal O'Connor School, she's the Cardinal O'Connor School Clerk, excuse me. Discussion? Motion to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Ross Sigewitz. Roll call.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sigewitz?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Seven yeas approved, motion carries. Having no further items before the school committee, oh, Mr. Gendron?
Just to prolong this a little more, I just wanted to say, you know, several of us attended the Hairspray Play at Lowell High School last week. It was outstanding, a really excellent production. I thought it might be a good idea to invite that cast down here for a spotlight on excellence as well, maybe at the next meeting.
Okay, further discussion? Okay, thank you, Mr. Gendron. Intervening motion to adjourn by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Gendron. All those in favor signify by say and aye. And the opposed, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening.